So we were trying to figure out how to log in. Just give us a minute.
We should be.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Good evening.
So let's call this meeting to order at 7:08 PM. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So does anyone have any comments regarding the meeting minutes dated January 10, 2023? And if not, if we are, I do not, I do not either. Would someone like to make a motion to approve minutes? I can. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting on 11023. I'll second that. Colin Gaver. Hi.
And Michelle.
Yes, Michelle.
Was it zero, one?
And moving on to the evaluation of visitors. Hello, everybody. It's nice to see you.
The new, new list approved they are. Yeah.
So I don't actually technically need to have them in the minute. Who's here? We're not like we.
Okay.
So moving on to correspondence and community. Do we have any correspondence that we'd like to discuss today? We don't. I don't know if they want to. Go ahead. You can make a point if they want. Yes, for anyone that would like to speak. Please. Lauren.
Hi, Lauren Sherlock, 17 Mayola Road. Thank you for having me. So I had communicated with Mr. Fontasi and Mr. Andrews, and I wrote a brief email to the school committee based on some experience and some things that I've heard about the bus between Nahat and Swamp Scott and just some concerns that I had. The concerns that I had were just based upon the behavior of students. I don't really want to speak to any individual instances, but I've basically, I've heard information about multiple students being affected over the course of a couple of years just by behaviors that are probably not uncommon among middle school or maybe high school students. The behaviors that are really unpleasant for students to experience, like taunting, you know, repeatedly sometimes for some students, making them really uncomfortable. And not my own family, but I know of a family whose student no longer rides the bus because of such experiences. And I don't know that those experiences were reported. I don't know, and I'm not privy to that, and that's okay. But based on just a number of different things that I've heard, it got me thinking about, you know, behaviors and students of this age and what, if anything, we could do as adults to help guide them and protect them. And from what I understand, you know, on the bus, there's a driver who's responsible for their safety on the road and, you know, getting from point A to point B. And I would imagine that it's relatively impossible for that driver to be able to turn around and monitor what's going on on the bus at the same time, let alone intervene if anything were to be going on. And I had chatted with the administration of the Swamp Scott Middle School because the students who I was aware of were students at the middle school. And I realized that then, when they're on the bus, they belong to us. But there's a little bit of co-ownership, I think, that occurs, or at least a quick transfer ownership of responsibility of the kids. So I'd spoken with the administration there, and they had suggested a bus monitor. And they had alluded to the fact that in their experience, a bus monitor for middle school students was common practice. And, for example, the other buses in Swamp Scott do have monitors on them, such as the Netco bus, which just increased my interest. I don't imagine that this is an answer to all of our problems. It was just something that I thought we could bring up for discussion as something that we might be able to do to add some support to the students and help provide guidance when able. So I thought I'd bring it to your attention. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you very much for bringing it to our attention. It's very concerning, and I know that middle school and high school is a very difficult age. And I personally like the idea of having a bus monitor. It's very, it's impossible for a bus driver to be monitoring what's going on. I think that rightfully so, that person should be focusing on the road. So I'm very curious as to what other districts are doing in regards to monitors and also fostering an anti-bullying culture.
Right. Madam Chair, through you, I had spoken to the community member, and I was aware of the situation. On your table, you will find the, your bus policy. And if you look at bus policy, JICC-R, student conduct on school buses, it states very clearly that in case of any, and I'm quoting, "In case of any misconduct on a bus, the incident will be reported to, on the proper form to the school principal. He will report the incident in writing to the parent concerned with a copy to the superintendent." I'm not sure that's been done, but we will follow up. Second point is number two. In case of a repetition by the same student, the principal will suspend the student's transportation privileges in, with written orders to the parent to report at once with the child to the superintendent's office. That obviously has not been done. And then three, after a second event and a conference with the superintendent, if a third such incident occurs, bus privileges will be denied to the student, and the responsibility for transportation will then rest with the parent. That also has not been done. Now, I want to be clear, that's the policy. That doesn't mean the school committee cannot, parallel to that policy, direct immigration to, with a bus monitor. My understanding is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, number one, the incidents that are of concern are only in the afternoon when the buses are leaving Swamp Scott coming to Nahat. I don't believe there's any incidents. And of course, as we all know, because we all see the buses in the morning, there aren't too many kids on the buses in the morning. It's more in the afternoon. I immediately, when I became aware of it, I contacted our bus company, and I said, "What's the situation with monitors? Can you provide a monitor at the school?" And the answer was, we quote, "We have no monitors," unquote. That doesn't mean we can't advertise and try to get a monitor, but we've never done it. We've never had monitors on our buses. And to my knowledge, since 2016, we've never had serious enough incidents to talk about it. Doesn't mean it doesn't, it's not occurring now. I'm simply giving you a history. I did not communicate with the previous superintendent to find out what's happened seven years before that, but I did look at the budgets, and it doesn't look like we ever had monitors. But if we need monitors, we need monitors. The question is, how do we get them? If we, if we need them. We, we meaning Mr. Andrews and myself, will immediately communicate with the middle school principal, give the middle school principal, and by the way, we have had communication. It's kind of in one way. For example, one of the questions that we have had to the middle school administration in Swamp Scott is what actions have been taken by the administration to make sure that the student be, excuse me, student behavior on the bus is safe and appropriate? And we're still waiting for an answer, but, you know, we'll follow up again. The, as I said, the actions in your policy are going to be followed. That does not mean you can't parallel to that, say, see if you get monitored. That's completely up to you.
If I may follow up, I'm sorry. If I may follow up, I'm sorry. One problem that I've observed, you know, just over the past couple of years is that the policy that we have, which I think is excellent and would be very, very helpful, depends on students reporting the perpetrator and reporting what is occurring. And it seems, it seems that it's difficult for students that age to report this sort of behavior without fear of retribution. So there seems to be a culture of not reporting, either when it's happening to the student or potentially even when it's happening to a student sitting right next to them. And I think that that's a very complicated issue. It's a big, big issue that we could probably talk about for hours and hours and hours. And it's, I think it's tough enough, tough not to crack. But the reason I brought up a monitor, again, it's not a simple solution, I'm sure, but it's the idea of an adult observing not everything and not, oh, couldn't see everything going on in a bus, but an adult being present that might, might influence behavior of people on the bus, at least to know that someone's eyes and ears are on them and open. And that if an adult were to, were to witness something, then it would be reported, and then would have an opportunity to do something about it. And I think, again, speaking about multiple children that I've heard of, and I don't have the authority to, to speak about them in particular, but I know of multiple occurrences that haven't been recorded, reported, probably because of student preference and fear socially. So it was just, that's why I think the action plan that we do have might have a little bit of a dependence on a process that may or may not be realistic at that age.
I'm also interested, I mean, it sounds like Swamp Scott uses, you know, bus monitoring, if I understood that correctly. And so, you know, although the bus, I don't know if they get them through the bus company or if they hire them independently and how we would go about doing that, but and, you know, I guess we have to first decide if that's something that we want to look into. Because, you know, just because things of this magnitude haven't been reported before doesn't mean that it hasn't been happening. And not that we need to do everything that Swamp Scott does, but there, you know, it seems to be a valid concern for safety and, you know, conduct-related concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Um, just because I'm not entirely clear on the process. I know that there's three buses that come through Nahat in the morning to pick up the kids at various locations at various times. And then they drop off at the high school and then the middle school in the afternoon. Is it the same process that there's three buses that leave the middle school and the high school and bring them, like, I guess, you know, how many buses are we looking to cover? And it would be great to get a, you know, what does, you know, I think we're so maybe in the information gathering point where we can look to see what Swamp Scott pays the bus monitor so we can get a sense of, you know, yearly budgeting and what that would look like, how they fill those positions, and how many, because I also know that there's a late bus. And, you know, the superintendent might have some insight into what would be the highest priority to cover for now. And then with the, maybe if we did decide to move forward, the ultimate goal of having possibly all the buses covered, or maybe that's not even an issue, depending upon if there's a higher level concern, uncertain buses. That's the thought I have. And I'm wondering, in the short term, you know, would there be any volunteers that would be willing to act the bus?
Good question.
I mean, I do know that they get volunteers in the, well, they ask for volunteers in the middle school for lunch duty. They ask the parents to volunteer. I know some parents do. I've been asked not to do that by my son. But things that, I mean, I know that some parents do volunteer for, you know, similar situations. No, it's just a thought that I have, because if this is the route we want to go down, it's going to take some time to find and hire. And yeah. We want to do what we can, and that's good. And if not volunteers, I'm wondering if we could even ask the Nahat Police Department if they would be going. I have no idea.
Or Swamp Scott has like a cadet program. Some agencies do that, that they might be able to offer somebody a student support officer or something like that, somebody in training.
I like that.
And the only question I had is, I know the policy says that the information for the buses have been communicated to those who take it. And I guess I just wanted to make sure that that happens and that they're aware of it, maybe even to rescind it to say, you know, there have been instances, and this is our policy, and to make sure that people are aware and signed it and returned it, and that we'll be enforcing that policy just as a preemptive to getting this in place, that parents have these conversations with their students.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, because having a first-time middle schooler, I wasn't aware of the policy. And I'm sure it's maybe sent in the, I don't know, the student, is it his student handbook for Swamp Scott? Or how is this shared with families? Because it might be good just to, is there a way to send messages just to the middle school and high schoolers that attend Swamp Scott?
I had asked Mr. Kalishman to consider that, and I don't know the status of, all I got back from him was that he was considering what interventions might be most helpful. And I haven't heard back, but that was about a week ago. So I don't know if it would, if Mr. Fontasi and Mr. Andrews, I know you've already reached out. I don't know if, if he's already doing it or if that's something that, that we would do. And again, there's a little overlap here as the students leave the middle school, and they still feel responsible, and then they're on the bus and they're ours. But that was, it seemed like an idea to reach out to, to parents and guardians and just kind of bring it towards their way.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think that that, that could be an easy thing to do. That doesn't cost any money, you know? And it could put parents on alert that there is a situation and to have this conversation and to review the policy with their students.
Without singling out anybody?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then I think we might want to revise the language in the policy in regards to the conduct of both the bus. There really isn't any language regarding bullying. I mean, when you read it, like, direct language regarding bullying. Yeah, I mean, it says annoying other professors and people. And then I'm curious in regards to the school buses. Are there cameras on the buses? Do you know?
I do not know.
I know it's becoming more and more commonplace.
I will find out. Yeah. Lots of good suggestions, and a lot of it depends upon the communication with the Swamp Scott Middle School, which we will continue to have. I have a lot of experience with this issue, having been a middle school assistant principal and a principal. And it is not unusual. And just as Michelle suggested, I mean, typically, the first step is a meeting with an assistant principal or principal or a guidance counselor and everyone who rides a bus. As Michelle suggested, I mean, typically the first step is a meeting with an assistant principal, or principal, or a guidance counselor, and everyone who rides a bus. Um, not to identify, in this case, uh. The identi- the identification of the alleged bully or person who's bothering other people. Is not known by us, by me. So therefore, you know, as an assistant principal, what I would simply say is, there's been a report that the behavior in the bus is unacceptable, it's dangerous. It has to stop, or else the next step is, we identify who is continuing to do it, and that person doesn't ride the bus. For a certain period of time. I don't know if that meeting has taken place, uh, we've asked for it to take place. Uh, we've also made the suggestion that if we need to do it, we'll go over there and do it. I even thought of getting on the bus, you know, I come in early in the morning, so I'm here where the buses are here. But typically. It's it's a different. Parameter in the morning than it is in the afternoon. So I don't think that's going to help. So if we have to drive over to the middle school, hop on the bus. Delay it a few minutes. And we will, uh, because this, everyone is in agreement, this is not acceptable. Um. And as sensitive as I am to. The lack of an individual student being able to report who's bullying them. Or bothering them. Uh, that's really, in most cases, an important aspect. Of. The corrective action. Because what we don't want to do. Is have a whole bunch of people, a whole bunch of students. Targeted or identified as a problem, if if it's one or two or three. You know, and uh, but I do understand the sensitivity to it and the difficulty. Um. Our bullying policy, I believe, I haven't read it recently, but I do believe it mentions school buses. And and property, uh, but I'll make sure. And if the chair wishes it to be added here, we'll put it on our list, please, sure.
Um, we do have a comment in the chat. Um. So this is from Robin, Robin, if you could just state your full name and your address, please.
Hi, Robin Howard for Flash Road. I just thought I'd ask, I mean, this has been an ongoing issue, um, when my oldest was in middle school, it was a major issue. And Officer Conti made it a habit of routinely boarding the bus the minute it got into Nahat. And would address the kids. And, you know, check in with the bus driver, um. And I I don't know that any. Major issues ever came of it, but. It it had been addressed, and I I know the way they dealt with it at the time was Officer Conti was around and. Our resource officer, so. He kind of took it on, um, uh, but I guess it helped because I never remember it really going anywhere and. Any kids suffering any. You know, expulsion from the bus, but I I may just not have heard.
Robin, are you saying that he would board the bus every day when it got to Nahat, or just?
Not every, not every day, but routinely, uh, and I. I want to say, I I honestly think there was even one instance that it was so bad that a bus driver drove right to the police station. And this, that's kind of how it started. Um, and then he kind of would just routinely. At a bus stop. Get on, check with the bus driver, how's it been? And he addressed the kids about what was expected at the time. But the kids all knew him too, because they had left Johnson, and he was our resource officer, and he was in the building all the time. So I don't know if that helped and. Um. But yeah, that was when my kid, my oldest was in middle school. You know, and then I don't remember it being such an issue when my youngest was in the middle school.
Thank you.
But I'm saying, you know, even if the police get on and, you know, ask the cops, you know, the police, can you kind of? Check, get a stop and get on and talk to the kids and say, it's not okay.
Right.
Yeah. Robin, thank you for that, because that's one, one of the. Scenarios that I hadn't thought of, I was thinking of getting on the bus in Swan Scott, but I never thought of when the, when the bus. Enters Nahat, all the kids are still on it.
Yeah, right. And I believe that's what he initially did, it would stop and he'd kind of get on and say, you know, check with the bus driver, how was it and?
Yeah. I do, I do want everyone to know, I did check with the bus company immediately after getting the first uh report of this, and the bus driver was not aware. Of misbehavior, the bus driver was not saying it wasn't happening, the bus driver was not challenging the report. What the bus driver was saying, just as um. Mrs. Scholak said. He was focused on road. Uh, this might be more subtle. Bothering students than the the incident that Robin was talking about, which sounds more like it was. Um. So loud that it was actually disturbing the bus driver.
Yeah, from what I understand, it was chaos.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't believe, uh, and I, please correct me, I don't believe that's this situation. I think this is, yeah, I hear, I see uh. Lauren shaking her head, this is much more subtle.
Which, I mean, to that point. It might even be so subtle that a bus monitor might not pick up on it, but I think that coming at it from all different angles. You know, having, you know, certainly having an officer check in every once in a while brings some authority. Having somebody, you know, thinking about having a monitor on the bus, whether it's a hired monitor or volunteer. An adult set of eyes, looking at the back of the bus, and also making, you know, students and parents aware. The conduct expectations. And maybe, you know, a conjunction to sending out. The school bus. You know, policy, also the bullying policy, and and that the two are really linked together, that. You know, there, this is the behavior that's expected, and and the school bus is included in our expectation of no bullying policy. And, you know, attacking it from all different angles. Covers all the different, as many as you can. And, you know, there's always going to be things we can anticipate, but.
So can we just review kind of what our action plan on this is, because we did talk a lot about what we want to see happen, um. So.
I think we're going to look into that, I have in my notes, we're going to look into the past of a bus monitor. Um, it sounds like Swan Scott has had them either in the past or currently, so. You know, where they're hired and and how much. That, you know, they cost. Um, how many we would need. How many we would need, yeah. Um, and, you know, looking at the buses, if there are certain ones that we need to focus on, at least prioritizing. From the feedback that's been given to the principal, a lot of it sounds like it's conversations with the principal. Um, checking with the bus company, if there's cameras on the buses. Coming from. Us sharing the policy for the school bus. Uh, behavior and. And I would ask the bullying policy to be shared with families. And the ramifications for not following these expectations. And then, you know, depending on the outcome there, it sounds like we could look into volunteers. And the police. Coming up.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
Sorry for my tardy arrival.
No, no, it's okay, it's okay.
Oh, okay, I'm fine, thank you, thank you.
That's all right.
But I do, yeah, sorry for not getting in touch, I lost track of time. I want to let you know that um. You know, I think it's important that we look into how we can support the kids on the bus. And what we think is going to be the best way to address these types of behaviors. You know, I think that some of the behaviors that can happen can happen with a monitor or without a monitor.
Agreed.
And um, and it's important that we also look at, you know. Bussing is a privilege, it's 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 an added service, I I see it as an added service. Students and families, and as students aren't going to meet the expectations, you know, they shouldn't be allowed to be on that. On the bus, so I'm interested to know if Keely has cameras, and that was one, a question I had with Mr. Kalishman. And that I want to look into. Um, and because it's not too hard to identify. You know, five or six bad actors, if there are such. You know, and say, look, you can't ride the bus, that's how you're going to behave.
Mm-hmm, agreed, no, there certainly needs to be a code of conduct that.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, the letters, I mean, frankly, I don't know who rides buses. Not the, the Mr. Andrews, so we have to figure that out. Yeah, so this is really going to be a cooperative uh. Activity between uh Mr. Kalishman, Mr. Andrews, myself, and perhaps uh Superintendent. Um. Angel, Angel Akis, if she wants to get involved, that, you know, she may have a transportation director. Uh, which I'm not aware of, uh, the other thing I think of. That wasn't mentioned is I, you know, will be contacting the police department to see if they can hop on the the buses as they come in in the afternoon to check in. The problem as I see it with that is. I think the driver would see gross misbehavior, I'm not sure the driver would see subtle misbehavior.
Exactly.
And we're still back to the point of how do we get it reported if we can? And, uh, you know, that'll be a dialogue with the um, with the administration at the middle school. But I do like um. At least passing the message. By a police officer, you know, lots of times the message is heard louder. Uh, by, by a.
Man in uniform.
Man in uniform, really, a person in uniform.
Yes.
And uh, but I do like that. Um, and we'll figure out how to share with the families of the students who ride the buses, may, maybe it involves a uh. Something to every one of the students who is at the middle school. I don't know if any of the high school students are involved, so that's, that's like the first step. Uh, if it has nothing to do with high school, that'll reduce our our load significantly. Uh. But we'll find that out. Um.
Last, we should still share the policy with everybody who this policy applies to.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So, I think that, a quick question, so there's potentially three buses that leave Nahat to go to the Swan Scott schools. And all three buses share middle schoolers and high schoolers on the same bus?
That's my understanding. That's my.
We don't know.
I don't know.
Okay, oh yeah, that's my understanding.
If this is an afternoon problem. I don't think the students are mixed.
Right, but I think.
Does anyone know?
So, it's Robin again, yeah, I don't, I don't know if they've changed it, but the way that it used to be done was. The buses in the morning. There was one bus that went to the middle school, one bus that went to the high school, and one bus. Would first go to the middle school, then the high school.
Right.
Then in the afternoon. There were still three buses, a middle school bus, a high school bus, and then the late bus picked up at the middle school and the high school. So it sounds like your issue is just the middle school issue, which is what it has always tended to be.
Well, because.
Yeah.
It's the late bus in the afternoon. The sports kids.
Right, yeah.
I'm sorry.
She's saying the late bus in the afternoon is kids that have seen practice school activities.
Right, and I don't believe the high school or the mixed bus is the issue, but we'll investigate it, we'll figure it, we'll figure that out. That's my understanding of it also, that it's middle school, high school, and and what happens is. Um. The starting, the starting in any kinds of the Swan Scott schools have flipped. Rotated, so um. Which one starts early, I think the middle school starts first now.
No, that high school started earlier.
This high school starts earlier, it used to be the middle school.
Yeah, and that's.
Okay, so. So the bus, you know, because, because I was involved in in August with, you know, what do we have to do, and the bus company simply said. It'll be the same routes, we'll just go to a different place. So, um, but we'll, we'll figure it out, I think of. So we do have a list of things uh that administratively we will take care of and and report back to you at the February meeting.
I think in the morning, all three buses have middle school and high school students, I think. Because I'm looking at the bus schedule and it says. The first bus is the Johnson School and Tides, and then. It doesn't say after that where it goes to school, but then it says specifically bus number two, we'll pick up middle and high school students. And bus number three, we'll pick up middle and high school students, and they have a bunch of stops. So I guess we don't know about bus one, but bus two and bus three both have. Middle and high school students.
Okay. But Madam Chair, it's for you. I'm pretty, uh, we will check, but I'm pretty sure none of the morning routes are. The issue.
Oh.
Um. Um, but but we'll check.
Well, then at least, I mean, if it's hard to find a monitor, if we can get a sense of when the biggest problems are happening, we can at least start there.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and on behalf of the district, uh, I'd like to apologize uh for any students and to the parents and guardians of any students. Who have had to endure any kind of um. Harassment, misbehavior, bullying, uh, taunting. Uh, obviously, that's not what we're about, and and we will do whatever we have to do to to end it.
Thank you.
There's another comment in the chat.
It's just me, I just, it's Lauren Scholak, seventeen mill, it's right, I just wrote, thank you for your consideration, thank you very much for all the discussion and consideration. Administration and School Committee, everyone's very supportive, and thank you.
Thank you, Lauren, for bringing it to our attention.
So Madam Chair, on Thursday, when I return, uh, Mr. Andrews and I will. Communicate with the middle school at, at the Swan Scott, and we will establish a plan. And I'll, I'll contact the police chief here in the hot and see if there's anything. Hopefully, he will, I think we have a meeting. That's next month. Uh, no, I'll say at the end of this month, so we'll be with. Officer Ryan, right?
Uh, yes, on the thirty first, okay, so.
We'll have a, a, not, could he not only to communicate, but to actually meet with, with him.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other correspondence and community input?
By the way, Mr. Andrews, I get a cold start. I figured out.
You got it going?
I figured out how to, no, no, I didn't get it going.
Good job.
That wasn't explained, I just figured I had to turn it on, I found a button in the back.
Okay. So if there's. No further. Correspondence and community input, moving on to the examination and the authorization for the payment of bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, in front of the school committee members today, you have. A bill roll. Which totals. Five hundred sixty seven thousand, two hundred eighty four dollars and seventy four cents. Um, the bulk of that is the five hundred thirty thousand, three hundred fifty five dollar and twenty one cent second payment to the town of Swan Scott. For our seventh through twelfth grade general education students. Uh, we have some special education tuitions. We have the out of district uh NT, NRT bus uh bill. And we also have the uh North Shore Educational Consortium, consortium, which is commonly known as SEC. Bills for uh three different bills. And um. You may want to know about the bill, the Boston Children's Hospital bill, that's for special education services. Um. And Mrs. Delicio has paid for a couple of different items that we are reimbursing her for. I also want to warn the school committee. About our electric bill next month. Um, we haven't used any gas to heat the cafeteria, because the unit doesn't work. But we have been running the electric heaters, we have been running them on low. So each of the heaters is using about seven hundred watts per hour as compared to fifteen hundred, but still. Uh, and I'm pleased to tell you that the temperature in the cafeteria, even in the. High twenty to thirty degree days has been maintaining in a very high sixties. Somewhere between sixty seven and uh. Somewhere between sixty seven and uh, and sixty nine, uh, right before the meeting started, I walked down there and it was, you know, it was sixty eight point two. I can't tell you what's gonna happen during a really cold day, if we get a zero degree day, uh, I'm worried, but. The good news is students and staff are in the cafeteria for very short periods of time. Um, and uh, as one parent told me. Uh, we know that it's gonna be chilly in the cafeteria, so wear a sweatshirt, so.
They already have the sweatpants on when they arrive, so.
Yeah.
To go.
Yeah, if we're going outside for recess, it's not an issue, because they're dressed to go outside. So it's probably healthier uh, as it is. So Madam Chair, I respectfully request a member of the school committee to make a motion to approve five hundred sixty seven thousand, two hundred eighty four dollars and seventy four cents. For the uh, bills for uh. January twenty fourth, two thousand twenty three.
Right. Yes, I can make a motion to approve the uh, bill for two, five hundred sixty seven thousand, two hundred eighty four dollars, seventy four cents. For the meeting of one twenty four twenty three. I'll second that. Colin Taylor, aye?
Aye.
Four zero one. And Madam Chair, just for the record, if I may take a moment, I do want the members of the community to know, uh, last meeting, we had an eight hundred dollar discrepancy. I did send all members of the school committee an update to tell you what it was, but I, I think uh, I, I would like if it's, okay, with the chair, just to explain it to. Or, or audience members. Uh, there was an eight hundred dollar charge for services to the district. Um. My administrative assistant pulled it at the last minute, because the individual did not have the appropriate paperwork to be paid on five at Town Hall. Um, we approved the eight hundred dollars as a separate article, and the minutes reflect that. I'm a chagrin to tell you that to this day, the individual has not filed the paperwork. So. We have approved that eight hundred dollars, but it's not being paid until that person and uh, files the appropriate paperwork, which is a W nine, by the way. Can't do anything without it, so I did want you to know that.
Happy to hear that town has that policy.
Yeah.
So moving on to the superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, COVID nineteen, as you know, as parents, you've been getting letters on a unfortunately regular basis about cases. Um, but with the new regulations uh, from this V E S E and the new guidelines from the C B C. Uh, we're basically handling COVID nineteen cases as we would the flu or uh, or uh, A or strep. And um. That's what is being um, recommended, and we're following all of the guidelines. And I, once again, I, I wanna thank uh. This, the, the Licio for her incredible leadership in this regard. Um. It's um, reporting a case of. Any kind of communicable disease at this point is on the article. Parents are to report it to the nurse, and then we take steps. Uh, we will make test kits available on an irregular basis as we have them. Uh, as you know, we've made them available to parents and guardians right before the winter break, so that they could give a test. On January second, before the students came back and um, in and around the vacation, if we have enough tests, we'll do the same thing. Um, the cases in, in the town are increasing slightly. But the serious cases have not gone up. That's my understanding. Which is good. Uh, the current by, uh, variant, I guess, is. Significantly communicable, but not, not serious as the, that original variant. Uh, now, if that changes, you know how viruses are, they mutate all the time. If that changes, we may have to change our policy. Uh, six B is the LED project phase two. A member of the school committee uh, commented on how nice it was to enter the building and have it just light up in front of you as you walk in. That's the uh, the benefit of LED, they dim. The same thing happens in my office. Sometimes I'm working uh, and I don't move. For five to six minutes. Really goes off, and I just like that. It keeps me awake. Um. We still, I believe, are waiting for. Two fixtures and one um. Set up.
Okay.
One uh, not set up.
Dallas?
No, we're waiting for them to come in and set. Um, the, the dimmings, the office dimming.
Yeah.
Concept. Uh. So you um, you won't see. A um, a bill. Because this was totally paid forward by uh, the Green Communities Grant. Uh, I think there were, it was eighty eight cents difference between the grant and the bill, and I have um. Graciously offered to pay the difference, so. So you won't see it, but basically, we're done.
Great, great.
And Madam Chair, with your permission, I will suspend the superintendent's report and turn it over to our principal. And there is a principal who's reported your back.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to present my uh, presentation report tonight. Um, I have a bit of a landing report, a two pager plus a couple of addenda to, for you to see as we go through. Um, I would, I would like to let you know that I've been working with Island Roots on the summer enrichment programs at the Johnson School. Um, and with that, I will reference the flyer that you have, item eight A in your packet. After some back and forth and kind of figuring out what was gonna work best, Johnson School is gonna be offering four weeks of an enrichment program. Eight thirty to eleven thirty, no costs, Monday through Thursday. Island Roots will be adding um, accommodations to families, and with a special rate for Nahat families. After eleven thirty and going until two thirty. And the ability to extend that out until five o'clock. And then a full day on Fridays. They're also adding a couple of weeks past where we'll be, uh, rather than three weeks, uh, starting August seventh, August fourteenth, and August twenty first. So they'll be looking to offer a full complement of um, camp services. From, and their services start at nine AM. But the um, the pro rating starts at eleven thirty for Nahat students. So my guess is that most Nahat families will opt for, and I will get this out in another format. Eleven thirty to two thirty. From Island Roots, if they want a full day, and then a full day on Friday.
Great, that's great.
Madam Chair, we've asked Island Roots to get the paperwork out to us ASAP, and I believe the last email I saw, March first, is that target date?
Oh, no, um, they were looking to get it out February fourteenth for registration, and given that. We were able to summarize what we expected them to be offering, I'm asking them to get this out the first week of February.
Perfect.
That's excellent.
And, and the Nahat students will have two weeks to register. Prior to it being opened up to non-Nahat parents and guardians.
Correct.
That's probably where I had to march first.
Right.
The, the fourteenth versus the. Fourth first, and now we're, we're hopefully moving it up two weeks.
Right, so I, I would like to see it the first week of uh, February for registration for uh, Island Roots. And now we for the, through the parent portal, like if you use Island Roots before, you'll use again. So we, I have my Google form ready to go. I didn't wanna launch it yet until this meeting. And then have a chance for you all to look at my Google form. So we can kinda see that, I mean, you know, it's clear. And then, um, and then after that, Island Roots will launch their additional.
So if I can interpret. We're gonna send the five members of the school committee an advanced copy of the form. So they can look at it with parent guardian eyes and give us feedback.
Yeah, correct.
Exactly, exactly. It's gone to Gina already, and uh, Gina was, she was still, was the free girl, yeah. Um, yeah, no, no, that's good. And then I'm, I'm, but I'm happy to hand it, send it to all the members if the chair would like.
Sure.
Um, do you have an eye on it?
Right, I'm just kidding.
Seriously, um, I. It can only help. And, and in the form, in the Google form, I do know strongly, Island Roots is a separate registration. They'll take you from eleven thirty to two thirty, and then they'll also take you from two thirty to five. And a full day on Friday, and three more weeks pass what we're offering. So we're focusing on a morning program that's gonna be enriching academic experience. And then the option for a, a wraparound with camp.
Yeah, the only thing I could, can suggest is on our Google form. Let's make that stated three times, maybe the first thing we say.
Yep.
Somewhere in the middle, and the last thing we say is that this form does not register you for Island Roots.
Right.
Cause there were about five families last year that, yeah, that.
And you know, what I can do is I can have the email that says, thank you for registering, telling you what you just selected.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
That's information for everything.
Information email that says, thank you for registering for the Johnson School. This coverage, this program runs from eight thirty to eleven thirty, Monday through Thursday.
Yes.
Can we put a link to Island Roots on that too?
Yes, yeah, sure thing. You can add links to uh, Google forms.
That's, I, I thought so, so uh, being as highly technical as I am, um, so that we. We um, we send a receipt for the uh, registration to our program. And then another reminder that this does not register you for these hours.
Yep.
Which are handled by Island Roots, and if you want your child to be uh, in the program, in the camp for these hours, click here.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I, I'd rather not wait until we have all the Island Roots registration information before we start registering our students.
Absolutely not.
Okay, but so I might not. I'll link to their website.
Yep.
And I also promise to email.
When it's available.
Anybody who's signed up for the morning program. Here's how you register for the next set.
Great. Can you remind me what grades it's students entering grade one through?
Well, I'm, I'm saying seven.
So, oh, so, oh, all right.
You know, we, we had a question about that last week.
Anybody that was in kindergarten, truce, with sixth grade this year would be eligible.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And, and.
Which is an addition, that's a little bit of a tweak.
Right, and it's just people that attend the Johnson School.
Right, absolutely.
Everybody that's in the Nahat community.
No.
Like if there was a Nahat community member who didn't attend the Johnson School, the free program wouldn't be eligible for them.
It's an M P, my understanding is an M P S program.
Right.
The free.
Yeah.
Program is not open.
The Island Roots would be.
But Island Roots would be.
Yep, and Island Roots is offering nine AM.
That's right, so.
That's right.
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 So. And they're gonna market it to, I'm sorry, they're gonna market it to Swamp Scott and Lynn and Marv.
Marv.
I mean, they wanna have it so it's sustainable.
Yeah.
And fun.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, I, I think the important thing for me is that what we've done. Even though the programs are different, that if a parent had three kids, you know. Theoretically, one at Johnson School, one somewhere else, and one in somewhere, a third place.
They all get dropped off.
They can all get dropped off at the same time, and they can all go through the day. In a parallel manner.
Yes. Do you know what the age ranges are for the Island Roots program? I'm sorry if you're sorry.
Um, I imagine there's, well, um, I don't know, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So because for aftercare.
Monday have that.
They're open for preschool.
Right, right.
So it would be interesting to know why.
Yeah, it's, it's tricky, it's a different, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just have to.
It's a big question.
But to your point, even if you've had an empty, a child entering into the kindergarten. If that might, that might be a possibility, we don't know.
At Island Roots.
Yeah, right.
They, yeah, it could be at Island, it could possibly be. You know, I would think, I would think a five-year-old, I, I would be able to, you know, work at camp. The ratios change when you're talking about a three-year-old.
For sure.
I would think. Okay, so Madam Chair, if I may continue, um, band update, I wanted to let you know that we now have eleven students signed up in grades four to six. Uh, that's just about a thirty percent of our students, uh, signed up for band, so that's exciting. Um, and they're gonna have thirty-minute lessons in small groups, and the instruments available are clarinet, trombone, trumpet, and flute.
Very nice.
Yeah. And they're also meeting after school, so they, last week, they started meeting two fifteen to three fifteen, uh, after school as a whole band. So they're getting individual lessons in groups of uh, two to three during the school day, and then after school, they're getting a, a whole band uh, assembly and practice. And right now, it's the recorder until their instruments come in, and that'll give them a kind of a jumpstart on how to read music and play instruments. I wanna let you know that the P, the P D S museum trip was very successful. Uh, the teachers were positive about student behavior and how much they learned and what they got out of it. Uh, the Indian Tang House was a hit. They went inside a house from the eighteen hundreds that was moved from China. Um, they also got to see the Inspiring Change exhibit, uh, a fashion exhibit, and they got to visit the pod. Um, I was able to also connect them with the director of the Art Nature Center, who's a curator for a lot of these exhibits. Uh, and Jane Winchell, and so she welcomed us at the museum, and I talked a little bit about her career before the students started into the museum.
I was lucky enough to attend it, it was wonderful.
Oh, great.
Thanks to all.
I thought so. All those, also, all the students got a um, a pass for two parents to go. Student free, and so it's essentially a family pass. So if you have a student in grades three, four, five, or six, you got a pass. And that lets you come back to see, so they can show you what they saw.
Great.
Yeah. I wanna let you know about some new evening events that we have here at Johnson School. Um, one is uh, March twentieth, this is a second Report Card Parent Teacher Conference. So we're having, this is the first year, we always have one in December, we've added one. Uh, it's a two-hour evening event on a, a Monday. The Friday prior to that is an early release day, and they'll add some time for teachers to schedule conferences as needed. So that's one, one of the new evening events that we have here uh, at school, and then I also wanna let you know about June eighth. We've always had hoops night, but we've added portfolio night to it. And so this is an idea where students at the end of the year can share their work with their te, with their parents. Uh, it'll be kind of an open house celebration of, of the school year.
So they'll be coming into the school.
Right.
Whereas historically, it's been outside.
It'll be outside still.
Yeah.
We'll have hot dogs and ice cream outside.
But.
And then we'll, we'll ask parents if they can come inside, and I'm also looking, working with Ms. Brandy on uh, garden tours. Yeah, so it's kind of a celebration of the school year. And um, and the band will be playing on the porch, uh, so that'll be fun as well. We've done that a few years ago, and it came out great, so hoping to continue that again, pick it up again. Uh, I, I wanna remind you, Northeastern University is here this, this week and next week. Although I've given you the schedule. Class has a, has a class, each grade in class has a class through February. I'm working with the school council on the school improvement plan, is, our second draft is underway. We'll meet again in March, for presentation in May. In January, on the thirteenth, we had a professional development day. We had a great opportunity for all the teachers to have a workshop on how to create an anti-racist school, how to de-colonize your curriculum, what to think about when you are presenting something. And I thought it was really helpful. I participated in that as well. I enjoyed the presenter, presenter, she was very dynamic. And on that day, we also got to meet TJ, who's here this week. I'm sure you've heard about him already, in the hallways. Uh, and, well, the kids are being in the hallways and he's directing them. Again, a shout out to N E F for supporting this initiative. Uh, all, all classes are getting down there, grades K to six.
How does that work in terms of, like, does every grade do a separate day, or?
Oh, great question. Yeah, so the way I worked it out is uh, Monday and Tuesday, they go down with their class for one hour. Uh, an hour fifty minutes, not during gym, not during P E. And so that's a little kind of a separate thing. So they have regular P E, and then with their teacher, they go down, and that's the first couple of days. Wednesday and Thursday, they're gonna go down during STEM and during art time, which I thought made sense. STEM is science, this is about. STEM is science, this is about climate change, uh, art is art, this is what this is. And so that made sense, so during their specialist time, plus a little time on either end of the specialist time. The teachers will drop them off early, they'll then be taken over by the classroom, they're a specialist teacher, and then the class teacher will pick up again. So a mix between missing music or, I mean, missing E L A or math and not missing E L A or math. So they're missing, so these two days, they're missing something, right, it's a special thing. Then it was missing the whole day, fifty minutes of something during Monday and Tuesday. Then third, then Wednesday and Thursday, it's STEM plus art, plus a few minutes on either side. And then it's Friday, finishing up, and then a celebration of the end of the day.
Right.
So it's about an hour a day, each class gets in there for four, uh, four hours. I was kind of fretting students missing class. Um, but I look at it, it really is less than a, a half a field trip. So it's not, you look at the schedule and say, wow, the whole class, the whole school's not doing anything. No, that's not the case. You know, so each, each student gets down there for fifty minutes.
That's great.
You know.
That'd be great.
One today, and they go back to the same fish, the same shark, they're supposed to be adding layers.
Yep.
So they paint a shark, then they have to use the gray, and then they mix a little white with the gray, do it again, do it again, so it kind of refines it over time. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure thing.
My kids have come home covered in paint, very happy.
Oh, good.
I've heard only positive things.
They're really enjoying it, I mean, it's important to make us, make students really enjoy where they are every day and appreciate coming to school, so I think that has value in itself.
Uh, Mr. Andrews, I, I didn't wanna interrupt through the computer, but, um. I just wanted to say how, um. How much of a pleasure it is, uh, to have the music teacher, um. Got, he's just wonderful and enthusiastic and is really excited and the kids as a result are really excited about music, so. You know, it's just, it's really nice to see that and, and have his enthusiasm flex. On the students, it's just really wonderful. He's really wonderful.
I, I couldn't agree with you more, you know, being positive and feeling great about what you're doing is so critical for learning.
Yeah.
Part in things, uh, and I think that's why we have eleven students interested, well, no, I shouldn't say that, we had fifteen, twenty students interested. Um, you know, how many wanna commit to the hours of practice and, and the regiment of the instrument, um, is a different question. But I think showing that we have eleven committed, um, is a reflection of his enthusiasm, which is just contagious. So thank you for sharing that, and I'm glad that Jonathan's, uh, taking part.
Yeah, me too.
Under, uh, community and enrichment, we, we had our garden tier, garden volunteer program kick off on our professional development day. We, uh, also had eleven volunteers, uh, one or more per class, so each class has an assigned, uh, garden club member. That is not a parent of the school, just someone who wants to help with the kids in the garden, and so they're all, um, gonna be taking part in that. They have two to three classes per season, and I'm gonna meet with them all as a group again, train them on something. And then they'll, um, be set loose to work with their class. They're gonna help by pulling up tools, showing the teachers where they're gonna be working, and then running one of the three mini lessons that happen during the garden lessons. Quick update on our, um, after-school enrichment, uh, Riley Edmonds is, uh, in Cheryl Liscio are leading the charge on this program. Uh, paired with the P T O, it's gonna start in February. And they have several programs, I started typing their names, but then I left off the rest, um, we have mindful movement. We also have, um, a s, several art exhibits, art programs, uh, a woodworking program, uh, a fitness program. And there are others, uh, Mr. Parentalzy that you recall?
I believe the, uh, P T O is running the. Cook, is it cooking or just maybe?
Nutrition.
Nutrition of some kind.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So a lot of options, and this will be we've been with band as well. So band is on Tuesdays, um, and then these other programs are gonna be able to sign up like a menu. Um, and look for those, that info, that sign of information to go out, um, very shortly.
There are no ca, there's no cost to the parents or guardians for any of these, that this is, uh, being funded by a grant that we were able to, uh. Gather.
Yeah.
For mental health, social health, and, uh. Kind of a return to normalcy or normalcy after, uh, COVID nineteen. So we're really thrilled about that.
And, uh, Mr. Parentalzy met with, um, Ms. Edmonds today to kind of finalize the staffing on that, or start to finalize the staffing on that. And, um, really spent a month, so those, those, that team has really worked hard.
Yeah, the positions have been posted for over a week, and we have to post by contract for ten days. So, uh, and we, we know where we're going, we have a plan, but we can't actually establish. The program until the, uh, eleventh day of posting, uh, it's eleven workdays. So basically two weeks.
And we need to organize everything anyhow, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I ha, I wanna let you know that the Coast Guard is, uh, planning to visit the school, work with the sixth graders again, and answer questions. I started a Google Doc with the sixth grade class so that they could type in what questions that they have. You know, what time did you have, uh, a threat, or when did you, you know, face difficulty in your, in your job? What did you have to learn about, do you have to know about tides or, you know, uh, currents? What do you, what do you have to know to be in the Coast Guard? So, uh, we're, we're getting those questions together and then we'll have some, uh, meet and greets, um, probably, I wanna say mid to late March.
Very nice.
A lot going on, a lot going on, getting back to the role as fast as we can. Uh, then on, on our upcoming events, I have a list of, uh, events there. One I wanna highlight is that we are gonna be working with the Nahat, uh, police department on a safety drill program on January thirty-first. That's staff only. And so what we've been doing since COVID is drilling with the staff on safety drills. And also keeping an eye on research that says what's the best practice for how to do a lockdown drill? Who should be involved and at what grade level? You know, what causes trauma, what is a positive way to handle these things? Um, and so we're going to do another, uh, a drill on January thirty-first with our new staff and all of our staff together, um, with the M P D. And then we have a kindergarten and preschool open house on February eighth. And that includes my report.
Yeah, I know. Okay, long time no.
Not just returned to normal, it's like returned to normal before.
Yeah, yeah.
Better.
Yeah, I got some frank advice there, I'm like, good, I, I like you think so. This lady.
Well, let's pump it up a little more, Madam Chair, I don't think we mentioned that there are gonna be two rounds of the after-school.
No, please give detail. Yeah?
Yeah, we're gonna have, uh, March and, and April, and then.
Yeah.
Uh, May and the first half of June, so we're gonna have two cycles.
And each grade level has different grouping, so.
That's right.
So art has a three to six and then a K to two.
Okay.
So it's gonna be different age groupers.
Very nice, very nice.
Lots of, lots of exciting things.
So moving on.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think, uh, item six C is just a report for members of the school committee about, um. Our, uh, January thirteenth professional development day, which was a success. And, um, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Andrews, who did the bulk of the organizing for that and arranging. And, um, and then item six C two is the newspaper article that was in the, uh. Lynn paper about, um, our wonderful artists in residence and, uh, if school committee members want to, uh. Go underwater, again, after the meeting, I'll, I'll walk you down and show you what's, what's happening down there.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of exciting stuff. Yeah. So Madam Chair, let me just move forward if I may, six B, the facility update, the telephone system, and as you can see, we have our new. Phones are mostly all involved and installed. Uh, we still have a couple of very small issues and we're waiting for pricing for a couple of phones that were, um, not quite, um, ordered. When we, when we did the project. So, um, and then I'm waiting for an invoice so that we can pay the bill. And we are using fiscal twenty-two money. I encumbered those funds, uh, in July. Uh, and I, I know you know this, but we were waiting for the materials for months, but, and the pho, the new phones work well. It's a combination system. The phone uses copper to our server and then it becomes.
Fiber.
Fiber.
So.
So it's not a voice, it's not a voice over I P, but it's.
Well, it is.
It sort of is.
It is a voice.
Uh, to get out. And at the same time, we're having a fiber. Um, system installed. In the town for all the public buildings. That is associated with the police and fire. Improvement of their wireless emergencies communications. And actually, we are going to have one of the towers on our roof. So, uh. Pretty, pretty exciting stuff.
If I can add, Verizon had offered to, um, give us different phones that would be on the network cables. But then the phones wouldn't, you know, we'd have all these jacks you can't use, the wire you couldn't use. And so it's a much better system to be able to use the copper to the, the fiber, I guess.
Yeah, and plus that system had a really high monthly charge.
Annual, they, they wanted annual fees, monthly fees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Recurring.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, cafeteria rooftop unit, we're still waiting for pricing, um, I did go to, um. The state bid system, so we do have a state bid on, on the, um, out there. Uh, haven't had a lot of interest shown to me, but of course, you know, sometimes you don't know until you get it. Um, and, um. We're still hoping that we can do better than the one price we got, and if you remember, that was fifty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. With eight weeks' notice. And with three weeks' notice, it was sixty-four thousand four hundred dollars, so we're hoping that. Um, we, we get better than that, um. I also am asking people who contact me that, you know, give us an alternative for a heat pump system, which would be more efficient over time. Because basically that system is a gas-fired heat system up on a roof. So, uh, we're hoping that, uh, we can do better, so.
Can I ask, is there any way, like, in the network to? I mean, let keep, I don't even know if people in the community that do that kind of project, it would even do a commercial project, but I just think about. I don't know.
Yeah.
Just kind of, I know that contractors are really busy, but. It, it's just so, I, I guess it's pretty common that people are just too busy to get in quotes, right?
Yeah, uh, there's a couple of things, one is that, uh, it's a big project.
Yeah.
That requires a crane.
Hmm, so probably beyond.
It would be, you know, that doesn't mean a small contractor can't rent a crane, you know, but, um. That's number one, number two is because we're a public entity, they have to pay, pay prevailing wage. Uh, which is. For some local small contractors.
Oh, that's the one they would get, yeah.
No, higher.
Oh, wow.
So, so it's not.
They would have to pay.
They would, that's right, they would have to pay their employees the prevailing wage, which is, uh. Not, you know, triple. Um, the minimum wage of that. So, but, you know, I, anyone knows anybody in the HVAC business, you know, give them my number and, you know, um. We, like I said, we have the bid out on the street, so, you know, it's, I can just direct them through the state bid list where they can. They can look at it, it's, it's COMBYS, C O M M B U Y S.
Um, and then also. Like amongst your superintendent, um, you know, network. You have to know if you ask, like, if other schools have needed work and.
Sure. Of course I have.
I figured you did.
Two things have happened, one is that everybody is scrambling and, uh, nobody wants to communicate.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Number two is the M, uh, the Massachusetts School Building Authority suspended their, um, emergency project. And now they're only doing big projects for new school buildings, they're not doing repair projects right now. That's number, and that, that, that was a big blow. Now, interestingly, we probably wouldn't have saved much money, but maybe a little bit. Because what happens is when you go to M S V A, you have to hire a project manager, which is a cost on top of the cost. And then the M S V A gives you a percentage of the, of the total. So just using a theoretical project. If the works worth a hundred thousand dollars, the project manager wants thirty thousand dollars, and then the M S V A will give you forty, so you really save in ten. That's kind of the way it works. But it, it really would have been, um.
Access, maybe.
Yeah, it would have been better because with a project manager, I wouldn't have to run around and do all this, the project manager would do, but that's not to be. Um, so as soon as we can get moving forward, uh, Town Hall is aware of the project. Um, I did, I did send the first bid over and the only comment I got back was, oh my. For the fifty-nine thousand dollar. Um, and then, uh, if there's no questions about the cafeteria rooftop unit, uh, the personal update. I have a, an actual update for you that. Is. Two weeks old now, and I was, I'll send it to the, uh, members of the school committee who aren't here.
Oh, thank you.
So what I did is I took all of our, uh, staff as of the ninth, and Sherry was kind enough to, to make a new list for me. And I just wanted you to have it.
Yeah.
Uh, so we are.
Police staff.
I don't even wanna say. I'm not gonna say it. I'm not. We are health police staff.
Yes, that's true.
Staff that are healthy men. And, uh, we did get, uh, I think. Everyone who's communicated with us interest in being hired has been contacted. Um, and we, um, we brought a couple of them to, um. To fruition. The first name here, Hannah Amato. If you remember, I told you last time, but I will repeat because you guys have a lot going on. Uh, she was our temporary special education teacher. Uh, she now has, uh, returned to what we hired her for, which is paraprofessional. And we do have, um. A special education teacher on board. As of this Monday. The person's name is not on here, is Janice Walwood, W A L W O O D. And if you remember, I mentioned the fact that her spouse is, uh, Mr. Andrews. And we, uh, we are really fortunate to have such a, a high experience, you know, uh. Deeply experienced special education teacher. You haven't had one for a while.
It's great news.
Yeah.
And this is all updated on the school website?
Um.
We'll be soon, we might, shortly. Thank you for asking.
Yeah. Add it to the list, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a really good example. On January ninth, we created the, you know, the list and.
Yeah, one's been, it's changed.
It's, needs to be updated.
Yeah.
And that's what happened, I mean, and I joked with Sherry, she didn't know that this would be a full-time job.
Yeah, yeah.
It was recently updated, uh, the staff list, it needs to be updated again, though, to your question.
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
So.
Shall we move to all visits?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, in your packet you have the two thousand twenty-four superintendent's budget for the draft. I also, uh, for your convenience, put in the updated, um. Budget development timetable, because when, if you remember, when we developed the timetable in November, we didn't know when. The school committee was gonna meet with the, um, finance committee, but now we know when. And there is a, a later, uh, budget item, uh, excuse me, agenda item, uh, that the chair. Uh, that the chair asked me to point on, because I believe you are going to discuss who will be going to that meeting, right?
Yes.
So that's in your packet. And in your packet. For your. Reading ledger. Is the new. Fourth version of the superintendent's budget. So this budget has a one hundred ninety four thousand six hundred and ten in dollar increase. The last budget uh, was a four point eight percent increase, this one's a four point four six. Percent increase. So what happened? Um. First of all, we had the increase, a significant increase in uncontrollable cost. Uh, we have seventy one thousand two hundred ninety eight dollars worth of increases for special education. Tuition and transportation. I actually have no input in that number. It is all based on the IP process. I cannot input, for example, I can't say to the director of special education, can't you make that lower? That would be inappropriate. We also have forty thousand two hundred dollars worth of increase for our uh, general education transportation. Budget. Um. So those three lines alone. Uh. Having an increase. Of a hundred and ten, a hundred eleven thousand four hundred ninety eight dollars. Our increase would be one point nine percent without those three lines. Then if you took the forty thousand dollars of the uh, tuition to Swan Scott. Uh, you would be talking about basically a level funded. So let me just go over page by page with you very quickly, on the first page of the budget, there are basically no changes. On the second page, uh, Chris and I went through every employee. And actually, instead of giving a percentage increase, we actually calculated. How much increase would be for every salary of every employee? And that number went from six fifty one to the to the. Um. That went down.
A few hundred.
Sixteen thousand five hundred and four dollars since the last time you saw it. The um, the special education teacher salary, which is three line, four lines down, lower, went up twelve thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Because we hired an experienced special education teacher.
But those numbers didn't go down because they were reduced, so because it was actually calculated, they didn't say that.
That's correct. I actually calculated the regular full-time employees instead of using a percentage increase, uh, Chris and I actually did. So if you go down to the subtotal. The. Nine hundred fifty eight thousand five hundred sixty four dollars. That's four thousand three hundred sixty four dollars less, because you had a reduction of sixteen five and an increase of twelve one. Okay? And that's the only change on that page. On this, on the the third page, in the middle of the page. The salary for the guidance. Counselor went up thirty seven hundred and seven dollars, however. I'm using eleven thousand twenty nine dollars of a grant. So we went from a point eight guidance counselor to a full-time ga- guidance counselor for only thirty seven hundred dollars. Which is a real bargain. Uh, and that grant will be in place next year. And we don't know about the year after that. If it's not. The superintendent's budget would reflect the full salary for the full-time guidance counselor, we don't, we don't want to go back. Um. In, this page also reflects an increase from the last one you saw for our speech teacher, once again. We calculated based on actual salary and change of lane. And that's thirty eight hundred fifty eight dollars higher. So um. The one hundred, the subtotal of one hundred eighty two thousand dollars is. Thirty eight fifty eight higher than the last time you saw it. And the subtotal of forty seven eight eighty six is that thirty seven oh seven higher, but again. That's a a point two FTE higher. So that's, that's a good, a good one-year move, hopefully we can uh, continue that. On page. Five. Skipping page four, because there's almost nothing on it. The tuition of private schools is eighteen thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars less than you saw it last time. I would love to sit here and tell you that's because it's going to cost us less. But that's not what I did, what I did is I funded some of the costs, the projected costs with our circuit breaker money. So it's not coming out of local taxation. Uh, and that's how I was able to reduce that eighteen thousand dollars.
Question in regards to heating and utilities. Those numbers up.
Wonderful question, Madam Chair, and if I did not tell you this last time, I apologize, I can't remember. Um. When I was speaking to the director of finance and the town manager about my budget. I asked that exact question. How should department heads budget? The unknown of electric costs and gas costs. What they decided after discussing it um, was that. All the department heads were going to put a two percent increase into their budgets. And then at Town Hall, they were going to have. A supplemental fund. Just for energy.
Okay, that's right, right.
Okay? Uh, because if you remember, the first time I showed you a budget, I had a twenty five percent increase that. And so um. They, you know. It's not going to be less expensive, it simply is a different way of budgeting because of the unknowns. Uh, I personally. Um, had a seventy percent. Increase in the delivery charges of my electric. At my house, I was paying ten dollars and, uh, excuse me. Point zero. One zero nine dollars. And now it's point one seven. So went from point one zero to point one seven, which is, you know, a huge increase. And your delivery charges are about half of the total cost of energy now. You know, so um, and of course, I'm sure the electric charge will go up too. I do know that the legislators towards have been. Petitioned. To revisit. The electric rates that they approved. So that's at Beacon Hill under discussion, I have no idea what's going to happen. So the um. So the increase in the budget. Is now less than it was than you saw before, but not significantly less. Uh. The four million five hundred fifty two thousand one hundred seventy five dollar budget. Was um. You know, about fif- uh, as I said before, about fifteen thousand. And it's a four point four percent increase. Uh, I am working on my PowerPoint. For the um. For the um, hearing. And then, of course, I'll use that PowerPoint um, with a new cover page when we go before the finance committee. Um.
Do you know that would be uh, two percent or virtually?
Both.
Oh, both, okay.
Members of the school committee who wish to attend virtually may, those who wish to attend with me. In person at Town Hall may also be.
Great, so one, one comment.
Yes.
So shall we take into consideration like bus monitors? I mean, and I know there's a very small window of time to make any qualifications according to this calendar. So I think the final budget student finance committee on, that's the next time we need, right, fourteen?
Well, here, here's my only. The short answer is, of course I can. The longer answer is, I have absolutely no, no idea how much the budget for. Um, and I have to have the public hearing budget set for your next meeting. So I will work diligently to try to get a number, I'll communicate with you. I want to remind the members of the school committee, since it's something you're going to be voting on, don't deliberate among yourselves. On the email, if you want to send me something personally, or just you and me, fine. But you can't say, you know, I support this or I don't support it, because you you'll be delivering on it. But if if I do have a number. And um. I'll add it. But again, number one, if you remember a discussion, I don't know how many buses, I don't know how many monitors I had, and I don't know what the cost of one is.
Right.
So uh, if I have that by February fourteenth, I will add it. Um. The alternative would be to estimate, and I'm not agree, I don't do that well. Uh, that kind of bothers me. Uh, which is why Chris and I spent a day and a half actually doing the numbers. Uh. So I will find out, but I do want to remind you, I already asked the Healy Bus Company if they could provide a monitor on the generalized bus. And they said no. So.
Yeah.
Let me, let me find out how much that would have been if they could say yes, that's, that's a pretty good start.
Right. Yeah, like we said, the, it sounds like Swan Scott has, either it's using them or has used them in the past, so they might at least be able to give us a price point. For what they were paying, although it might be updated.
Yep. Will do.
Any other comments? So on February fourteenth, we'll meet before the school committee meeting. To review the budget, is that what happens?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you, at six thirty PM, I will ask the chair to chair a budget hearing. I will make a presentation. At that time, uh, my PowerPoint. The first uh.
No, I'm laughing, cause happy Valentine's Day. Hello, it's so funny.
I think, I think we laughed about that once before.
Yeah. So good, yeah.
And um. And then the school committee has the option of tabling it. To the first meeting in March. Which. No, you don't have that option, because our meeting with the finance committee is on the second, which is before the fourteenth. Which is your next meeting. So the school committee has to approve, reject, or amend. And that would be the final. Version of the superintendent's budget. The good news is, if you amend it, then I have enough time to change my PowerPoint and all my numbers and all my percentages, which I now have.
I'm sure you have it down on the side.
So Madam Chair, the out-of-district transportation contract. At eleven AM on Thursday, I will open the bids. Uh, if you remember. The last time, this is the second time I'm doing this, the first time I did it, the only bid we got. Was for a two hundred and thirty seven dollar. Increase. Which obviously I reject. Um. I haven't heard a lot of add, you know, I think we've gotten three emails about the bid. Uh, people who said, you know, can I have a copy of it? And of course, we sent it. No one has asked for a hard copy. So about two and a half weeks ago, I started calling. Other superintendents saying, you know, what do you do, you know, how do you do this? And the bigger districts say, you know, well, we have our own, but, you know, we have our own. Full-time. Transportation director, talk to them. And then I found out that. The SEAM collaborative, which is in. Montville Avenue in.
Right.
Well, Uber, no, the next one over, what it says.
Stone.
Stone. Does transportation for several districts in the area, so I called the director of finance. Who said, yeah, we do this, and because you contract with us, you don't have to do a pit bid. Because we're a collaborative, um. We're, this process that we do. Is excluded from the uh, forty B, which is the requirement of putting expensive contracts out on the street. So um, we are sitting in a very nice position for the first time.
That's great.
So. No, you know how it's, it's better, sometimes it's just better to be lucky than good. Somebody made a comment, I followed up with a bunch of phone calls.
And now some clever.
So. Here's where we sit. If the bids on Thursday are lower than what the SEAM contract is, we'll accept it.
Yeah.
If they're not, we'll reject all those bids. And next month, you'll sign a contract with the SEAM collaborative. To allow them to provide our transporti- uh, transportation for out-of-district students.
Great.
Interestingly.
How, how, did they give you an estimate? And it was pretty.
I don't know how much it is.
All right, but it was like not outrageous, it sounds like, that's a great.
Uh, because they are, interestingly. Their contract. For next year. Is with the bus company, we have our contract with Felicia.
Why aren't they renewing our contract with us? They just don't have the mantle?
Why are they, because.
The, the bus company that we have our contract with this year.
Yeah.
Why are, why are they putting a bid in? Like directly, why are we going to have to go through SEAM collaborative? You don't know.
Uh. It is my opinion. That it would be in our best interest to join the SEAM collaborative. Because when the negotiations, they have one more year in their contract with this bus company.
Right. So we can jump on it.
When they, so we can jump on it for a very small increase. If that's the best deal. And then. For. Twenty four, twenty five. And beyond, SEAM will negotiate for us in a bigger pool. So they will not be negotiating with a bus company for. You know, four, five, or six transportation uh, runs a day, they'll be negotiating for a whole. Bundle of runs.
Right. So making more work there, why?
That's right. In addition to which. Because we belong to the SEAM collaborative. If there's a district in the area who also goes through the SEAM collaborative. And they have students going from their home to point A.
That makes sense.
And we have students going from. The homes in the heart to point A. We can share costs.
That's great.
And I did have a, a, the reason I know about this is I I had a phone conference.
That's great.
Figured it all out. But again, um, the bid process is going to reach conclusion. We will look at the offerings. Um, and we will be able to um, take the most economical bid we have.
And this is for twenty three, twenty four, so in fact, the budget that we're putting together.
It. It is accommodated in the budget that you just viewed. There will be no.
Adjust.
Need for adjusting it.
Great.
But again, I want to remind you. I plan to use some. I plan to use some circuit breaker money for tuition and transportation for special education the way it sits. So open bid eleven AM, and by your next school committee meeting, you will have a contract with somebody. Guaranteed not to be a heart stopper like the last one was.
Excellent.
Okay? Uh, the lead paint update is there is no update, I'm still waiting for the estimate, I asked the company to take their. Their, um. Proposal and divide it into. Uh, indoor and outdoor work, and I'm still waiting for that. And Madam Chair, I defer to the chair for a discussion of the finance committee meeting of the second of March at six thirty PM.
So I guess the question is, who would like to? I cannot. I don't, I can't. The question is, if we have enough people going that we have to list it as a school.
I, I don't feel strongly about going, but I don't. But if you need me there, I'd go, I just have to check to see I haven't gotten that far in my country.
I will.
Michelle?
I'm good.
And Beth is not here. If you need my support, I can, I'm sure move things around, but.
I guess we've been interpreting, I'm good to your. But I, I think we all know which way to interpret it though. So Madam Chair, um.
Even if Beth wants to go.
Yeah, Mrs. Anderson wants, Ms. Anderson wants to go, excuse me. Um. And we, we ended those, then it has to be posted.
Yeah, but I'm only one. But I, I would be very surprised if Beth wants to go.
As, as, from what I can tell, I, I will not plan to go.
Okay. So it will be Madam Chair or you, you and me and, or. Um, Ms. Anderson.
Yes, and I can reach out too.
Okay, thank you.
And if, and if Beth is not going, and it ends up that I can go, I could still go. Cause it won't need to be posted unless there were three or four of them.
Yes, the only thing I ask is, as a courtesy, I always tell the.
Who's going?
The, uh, members of the finance committee who's going.
Yeah.
That's all. But that's just courtesy, I mean, I can do that the day of.
And you plan on attending in person?
I, I will be in person.
I'll go. It'll be at the town hall?
It will be in one of the, uh, first floor conference rooms, usually the one, if you were coming in from the outside, there will be a long door. It's, um, from the library. It's the one on the right. That's the one that has the technology, so. And then Madam Chair, uh, in terms of new business, I believe we talked about the summer programs. And then the north, the, uh, North Shore Educational Consortium is a very simple agenda item. Uh, I got a copy of their annual report, which you have a copy of. And on the table, there's actually a color copy. Uh, which. If the members of the school committee want, I can skip. I can scan the color copy? No, I can't. Cause it's two-sided.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's why I didn't scan it the first time.
Thank you.
And that's. That's all I got.
Excellent, is there any other committee business? The only question I have is, I think we are going to receive feedback on the staff satisfaction survey. In this meeting, I don't, it's not here. Do you know?
I do not. Oh, yes, I do. Um, I apologize, we had a labor management committee meeting and it was a discussion. And the union asked for more time to run it by. Their members.
So they're not completed yet? Those survey? Not yet, okay.
Am I talking about, I think you're talking about a different survey.
Yeah.
I apologize.
For the last time that. And it went to them, the NTA.
I think it's gone to them, and I had in my. Minutes that there was feedback already received on the staff. Satisfactory, teacher satisfaction survey. So I wasn't sure if he was compiling the feedback and was going to share it with us. Or if he got feedback. On the survey itself, but I hadn't actually done some of it, do you remember?
I thought he was compiling the feedback to give back to us with the results.
That's what I thought.
That's right. Number two.
I apologize, I, I was in the room when the discussion occurred. My memory of the labor management committee is. The feedback that he got was about questions, not answers.
Yeah, they were compiling, um, reviewing the feedback on the questions to make them better.
That's right, and. It's still not set.
Oh, right, cause he wants, they were going to be more positively phrased.
That's, that's right.
Yes, he said that, okay, so we, so it must not have been to get them. Okay, great.
And we have another, another main, uh, labor management in, uh, February. Uh, the good news about the labor management is that we are. Prowling ahead, simplifying that. Monstrous evaluation system that this state set up. Uh, that's about eight years ago. And so both sides are trying to streamline that for, for all parties. To make it, um. Little, you know, to make it easier to live with. I mean. The dates that the administration has to remember, you know, is somebody, uh. First-year teacher or a second-year teacher, the dates are different, and then the, the, the year you get your professional status decision, they're different. And if, you know, are you in your first year of a, uh, two-year cycle or on your first, second year of a two-year cycle, they're different. It's, it's just so complex, so what we're trying to do, and we're making tremendous headway, and I have to thank the, um. The NTA, uh, leadership, we're making tremendous headway of saying, look. Let's just evaluate everybody, let, um, this schedule. Um, if you're a first-year teacher, you know, maybe the date should be a little, you know, sooner, but. Um, let's make the, the due dates for everything on the same days.
Yeah.
And then let's take all, take out a whole bunch of forms. Teachers have to take time and fill out, we're so small that you can sit across the desk from the principal and talk about it. Which is much more valuable. So. And yet, of course, we have to abide by the state law, so. There's the man who has the answer about the survey.
Sure, so, um, I got feedback from the teachers, integrated that into the questions, and now it's back to them just to do a final check. Um, I have it in Google Form ready to go. Uh, anonymous, uh, or people can leave their names if they want me to get back to them with follow-up questions. Um, but we have a final draft. And, um, and it'll be ready to be launched, I'm sure within a week.
Thank you for validating the fact that my memory is not completely. That was my memory of it, but then I, I started to.
No, don't doubt it, it's still working, okay?
So, is there any?
I do not have any.
Any announcements?
I don't have any.
Okay. So, someone likes to make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to adjourn, adjourn.
Oh. Into executive session.
Okay. Okay. And I make a motion saying, okay, I'd like to make a motion to join into executive session, enter into executive session, not to reconvene to open session. The reason. Okay, for the approval of the executive session minutes from one ten twenty three to conduct. Strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-renean personnel. And I would like to make a motion to end this at twelve seventy-five, eight fifty-seven PM.
Second half, call in favor?
Aye.
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 Still recording.
Okay, um, shall I close, Madam Chair? Oh, executive session, I'm sorry. You're right.
I think we can.
The reporting, oh, I got the, oh. I got a password book.